Things down out there. We are going to go to the Lord in prayer, thank Him for everything, and then we're going to follow that up with our pledge. Our heavenly Father, I was convicted this week to change my prayer life to come to you and just to praise you for who you are. More about to worship you and to thank you for everything as opposed to what you can do for me. So we just thank you for everything that you've done for our town. We thank you for your many attributes that are so awe inspiring. And thank you for loving us despite what we deserve and the sacrifice that was made for us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved. Second.
We have motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a couple of proclamations here. One is that we don't have, Scott, I guess you will, you and Phillip will be receiving on behalf of the Public Works team. So I will read our proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas public work services are essential to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Tyrone, Georgia. Whereas the town's facilities and services can only be provided through dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, and administrators. And whereas these professionals are responsible for designing, building, operating, and sustaining the public transportation systems, sewer system, buildings, parks, grounds, stormwater systems, dams, environmental protection essentials, and other facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas the year of 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week. And we recognize public works professionals, engineers, and administrators, their contributions to the town of Tyrone. And now therefore we, the mayor and members of the town council of the town of Tyrone, do hereby proclaim May 18th to 24th, 2025 to be Public Works Week. Which one do y'all want? Thank you. Thank our guys. We have more gratitude to share for them later on in the meeting. And then Chief, you got a crew here for this next one. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls his National Police Week. Whereas the members of the Tyrone Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Tyrone. Whereas it is important to all that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that the members of the Tyrone Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of the Tyrone Police Department increasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore we, the mayor and council, call upon all citizens of Tyrone and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community. And in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We further call upon all citizens of the town of Tyrone to observe Thursday, May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have been disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. So proclaim this 15th day of May, 2025.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, Scott.
Good evening, council. So this item is for the 2025 Asphalt Resurfacing Project PW 202501 in consideration to award this project to Summit Construction and Development LLC for a base bid amount of $866,743.47. And keeping it with our road maintenance program, this year's consisted of L-MIG 2024 supplemental for Drumcliff Yates, Kyle Moore Pass, Kyle Moore Court, and L-MIG 25 for Shamrock Industrial Boulevard, our, excuse me, Mallory Court and McCarthy Court. The project was also advertised with a bid alternate for Clover Lane, which we are not recommending. The base bid amount, as I said before, was $866,743.47. This will come out of the general funds out of the 140522205 road maintenance plus the L-MIG supplemental, the L-MIG supplemental or L-MIG 25 and 2023 sploshed. Staff request the council award the project PW 202501 for the asphalt resurfacing project and for the sum and for the mayor to execute the agreement to Summit Construction and Development LLC for the total sum of the base bid amount at $866,743.47.
Are you able to control our monitors? Thanks, bud.
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Scott? Why don't you give us 30 seconds to?
Yes, sir.
That 866 was broken up, what, three or four ways when I read this? Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Sandy.
Anybody want to see the parts of the packet? Maybe just? Is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I make a motion that we award Project PW 2025-01 for the asphalt resurfacing project to Summit Construction Development LLC for the base amount bid of $866,743.47.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, council. The next one is consideration to award engineering services for project number PW 202514, which is the 2025 Stormwater Structure Maintenance Project to Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC for an amount to exceed, not to exceed $18,000. A lot of our sinkholes and thus the stormwater quality when the soil enters the stormwater system is caused from problems inside the catch basins themselves leaking. So we've identified 58 stormwater structures. GMC, which is the A&E we're talking about, is proposing a $6,000 design and bidding assistant not to exceed 2,000 and construction admin not to exceed 10,000, which equates to a total project cost not to exceed 18,000. We will do a lot with the construction admin on this and also I don't expect the bidding assistance to go to the 2,000 number either. So hopefully this is going to come considerably under that in the end. So this is coming out of the general funds for stormwater, the 140522211 count. Staff request the council award the project PW 202514, the 2025 Stormwater Structure Maintenance Project, and for the mayor to execute the agreement with Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC for engineering services not to exceed $18,000 even.
Scott, have we ever used these people before?
Yes, actually this is the same company that designed this building.
I'm sorry.
The same company that designed this building.
Oh.
Yeah, GMC is probably the way you.
Yes, that, right. Okay, thank you. I didn't realize that was the acronym for that.
Yes, sir.
Scott, they did design the sewer system as well.
Actually, they did. They did the downtown sewer system, yes.
The 58 problems, is that specific to, that's the ones that you've designated as the ones that need to be addressed? Or are those ones that they'll be looking at to make that assessment to see if they need to be sealed?
Yeah, well, we've done our, each, you know, each year we do try to do a fifth of our stormwater inspections as part of the requirement to do all of them within five years under EPD in the MS4. These were identified as part of that process as being ones that were in need of repair. These had a lot of things that didn't have like grout around the pipe and some things like that and other, other things. A majority of these will be just grouting projects, but there may be some that require maybe like an epoxy sealant and other things like that. That's where they'll do the assessment part of it, but we've identified them already as being issues.
Questions or?
I'll make a motion to award engineering services for project PW-2025 structure maintenance project to Goodwin Mills Kwood LLC amount not to exceed 18,000.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Next is consideration to award the 2025 Right-of-Way Mowing and Grounds Maintenance Project number PW 202508 to A. Abbey Group Incorporated for the amount of $249,250. The existing 2020 right-of-way mowing contract ends in June of 2025, the end of June. Requests for proposals were received on April 29th. The requests were for the mowing of grounds and maintenance of 24.8 centerline miles of right-of-way and 26.7 acres of town-owned property. The town selection committee evaluated four different firms. Those firms were A. Abbey, Russell Landscape, Yellowstone Landscape, and LaGrange Landscaping. The town selection, as part of that, the criteria was evaluated along with the costs. So the cost for, that we're proposing is the 249, 250. Russell Landscape was at, that was with A. Abbey. Russell Landscape was at 296, 844. Yellowstone was approximately 325, 829, and LaGrange Landscape was 196, 451. The highest ranked firm in the selection process was A. Abbey. And basically when we did that, we identified them based off of the criteria that was listed in the RFP. There, each, each criteria had a different weighted value of it. For example, the qualifications, the contractor was 20%, the timeliness approach and current workload was 20%. The just clarity and putting all the forms, proper forms in was 10%. Financial stability was 15% and fee schedule was 15%. Those were the breakdown of how we evaluated them for each criteria, the value we gave to each criteria. This is going to be coming out of the general funds, mowing, which is the 140522203 for Public Works. And those that are the park facilities will come out of 160522203 under parks. Staff request council to authorize the mayor to execute and award the contract to the right-of-way mowing and grounds manual maintenance project PW 202508 to A. Abbey Group Incorporated for the amount of 249, 250.
Scott, oh, I'm sorry.
This does mention both 2025-08 and 2025-09, but I just want to clarify, this is dash 08.
Yes. I believe this is 08, sir.
Yeah, because the next item is.
Is 09. I believe it's 08. Yes, sir.
I'm just saying that is so that council knows to read. Don't read where it says staff recommendation. File up there at the agenda item where it says 08. I see what I'm talking about. Go ahead, Mr. Campbell.
Scott, normally you guys put in the, the other bids in there. Could you just, for, for just clarification, Russell Landscaping, just round numbers, 296, then Yellowstone was?
325.
And then the last one?
LaGrange was 196.
196.
Sir.
Thank you. Now, was there, is there an increase? Or is that, is that where they were last year for, for, excuse me, A. Abbey?
This is an increase.
Okay, of how much?
Approximately 45,000 roughly.
Why do you think the last one at 196 was much lower?
Why their price was lower?
Not entirely sure why they're, why they had some of their pricing, but there were a couple of items in the schedule of values that they had numbered as much lower than some of the other bidders. Like for some of our larger properties like Shamrock Park. And I think some of the right-of-way along Highway 74, they had put in numbers that were considerably less than, than the other bidders. And I think that's, if we're just talking about what was in the schedule of values, that's why theirs was less.
And keep in mind, that's just the, the cost is a percentage of, of the overall selection process.
Scott, in reading this, I see that you're still using a performance bond and what, on that? And what's the percentage of that performance bond?
Performance bonds on construction contracts and services like this normally are somewhere around 2%.
2%. So we have to assume that all of them are just adding that 2% right into their bid price?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Certainly, sir.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad we're. Out of LaGrange, that's a good little.
I agree with you. They're a good partner.
Make a motion to award the 2025 Right-of-Way Mowing and Grounds Maintenance Project number PW 2025-8 to A. Abbey Group, Inc. for the amount of $249,250.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right. This one is for consideration to award the 2025 Fertilization and Weed Control Project, project number PW 202509 to True Green Limited Partnership for the amount of $10,360. The existing 2020 fertilization weed control contract ends in June also. We received the proposals on May 25th. This company was the only company that proposed the services for fertilization weed control at Hanley Park, Dorthia, Redwine Park, Shamrock Park, the museum, the library, Veterans Park, and Town Hall. The proposal amount was $10,360. Comes out of the general funds for grounds for both Public Works and for REC. And we request, or staff request council to authorize mayor to execute and award the contracts for fertilization weed control project number PW 202509 to True Green Limited Partnership for the amount of $10,360. I will also note that this number is actually the same as the current changing price.
Years we've been using them, Scott. They've been around a long time.
Five years.
Around even when I was around.
Oh, I mean, since I've been here, yeah, that's, yeah.
They've been around. Anyway.
But maybe around, meaning we've been, we've been using.
Yeah, that's what I mean. They've been, I'm sorry? Yeah, I thought so. They do a good job. I make a, I make a motion that we award the 2025 Fertilization and Weed Control Project number PW 2025-09 to True Green Limited Partnership for the amount of $10,360.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, council.
Now, are there any public comments? Staff comments? Normally do not like to ask you guys. Hillary alone at time and a half.
Would they do it in two days? Like? I mean.
It'd take two days. What they do, from what I understand, and we were.
That company again was?
Well, I would like to say thank you for thinking outside of the box and being creative. I know that the easy response would have just been can we send our offices up? But just to be cautious, I greatly appreciate that. Thank you for that.
I make a motion that the, we ask the mayor to please sign off on this service agreement with St. Joseph Detention Center in the amount of $482.
I have a question. I thought recently decided that the department could spend a certain amount of money without asking for permission? Fall under that new criteria?
I should, Dennis question.
Okay. Okay. Got it.
And this, this occurs regularly where we may procure services that are under the threshold, but it ultimately comes with a contract that needs to be executed by mayor and council. So it's just one of those things as well.
Okay. No problem.
Good thought, dear.
Um. All in favor?
Aye.
You had a question?
No, I was gonna say, are we gonna vote?
All right. Any other staff comments?
I'd like to give a shout out to Officer Penny Minch for recognizing that a new business coming in was doing some major construction, and they told me that they were doing minor construction. So we took that to SafeBilt and they put a stop work order on their business. So thank you, Officer Minch.
Just wanted to give you all an update on the sewer spill that we had recently in Rivercrest subdivision. I know, I know all of y'all were made aware of it, but just giving you, you know, your update. We, you know, we responded to that call at around 3:00, 3:30 on Friday afternoon. By 5:30, we had had, we stopped the flow of sewer coming out of that pipe because we were manually draining the wet well at the lift station with Ryland Reptic. And then we subsequently got the pipe repaired by 1:00 AM that morning, Saturday morning. And just wanted to express my appreciation again for the Public Works guys that were out there. We had Cody, Rod, and Tucker out there, and they were running back and forth getting everything that we needed done. We had emergency contractors from Piedmont Paving out there, Ryland Reptic, Curtis, Scott, myself. We worked as a team and got it, got it fixed pretty quickly. As a result of that, we were nervous about, you know, having a major sewer spill. Anything over 10,000 gallons is considered a major spill by EPD. We estimated about 25,000-ish gallons was the result of the spill. So we were nervous that there would be some sort of fine associated with that just because we're, you know, we're responsible for the sewer system. We got a great email back from EPD after we gave them a summary of our actions and they said, just given the speedy response and the detail-oriented nature of how we responded, that no fine would be imposed on the town from EPD.
Well done, tool.
So, yes, we've, we've escaped the fine from EPD. That being the case, we do, as a part of our emergency management program, have to do a monitoring service over the next year of the waterways upstream and downstream from the spill area. So we are in the midst of procuring the services to, to conduct that. In fact, I believe we've already, we've already procured those services through Integrated Science and Engineering. They'll be doing the testing. We'll get lab results. That'll go on for the next year or so. And that's where we're at.
Staff comments?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add to that a little bit. Like to really give a big thank you to Piedmont Paving and Ryland Subjectank Company and RCS Industrial Environmental for all coming out and supporting us with their equipment during this event. They were very professional and very helpful and did a great job. Also, like Phillip said, the, the crew, obviously, and Curtis, but also to Phillip and Brandon. They came out, got involved, turned around to me and said, what can I do? What can I do? And so they were helping do a lot of the administrative stuff of keeping up with our sewer response plan and managing, making sure that everybody was being contacted and that all the things with EPD were getting started and all that kind of stuff so that I could focus more with the contractors and getting the work done and getting the, the problem stopped so that we were minimizing our, our spillage. So they were a huge help, which just goes to show just the kind of management we have here.
That's right back at Scott. Not too much back and forth on it, but I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have the response that we did without Scott or have that emergency management plan in place and all those steps for Brandon and I to just go right there, read it off, say, I'm taking this, I'm taking this, I'm taking this. So we really appreciative of Scott as well. We would not have been able to do it without him.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one. I, I, since Mr. Perkins is not here tonight, I want to remind you that we have a budget meeting next Thursday morning. I believe it starts at 9:30. All are welcome.
I thought it was nine.
I'll see if I can make it. Twenty-second? Nine-thirty on my calendar.
Okay.
It's usually nine, but I believe he put it 9:30 this time.
Okay, any other staff comments? Council comments?
Where do we, where do we stand with SafeBilt and regarding the code enforcement?
So we, we still, I mean, we've still retained, we still retain SafeBilt services for code enforcement. And we've been having conversations about, you know, trying to get some better service out of them. I just did a kind of, a little bit of an audit today. Well, just with the mayor, but prior to that, kind of went through all of our code enforcement cases in Community Core, kind of logged them. And I, I plan on having a conversation with Mr. Hardy sometime next week. I will be out of town tomorrow, but...
Thank you.
Tomorrow is Mr. Troquet's birthday.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
And Sierra's is next Friday.
Any other council comments?
I would like to remind everyone that Memorial Day is coming up and that we need to always remember those who gave all to, for this great country and to take time out during your celebrating to pause and pray for the families that lost loved ones in honor of serving this nation and the freedoms that we get to enjoy that day when we're all off. And I know that the town will, will be closed in honor of the holiday and just for everyone to have a safe holiday and respecting the, the ones that are still serving, but those who gave all.
I would like to say congratulations to all of the graduating 5th graders, 8th graders, and 12th graders. This is the graduation season, and we have several schools here in, in the area, and I just want to say shout out.
With that note, shout out to Tracy Fur-Pierce. She will be...
Yeah.
Thank you for her commitment to our children. Okay, and Dennis, I want to thank you for, for commitment to us, your steadfast, steadfastness. Lot going on in your life. Probably tired physically and mentally, but we appreciate it right for you in your loss. All right. Other council comments? Is there a need for executive session? Okay. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.